Apologies for absence, Karen. Any from the floor? Anybody else? Can't see anybody indicating. Okay, minutes, minutes of the previous meeting. Now, this is pages nine to thirty-four for accuracy. councillor Dunworth. Thank you. Microphone here, Gordon.
On page thirty-two, it's my question about streetlights, councillor Sanderson. The bottom paragraph, it said that I said there were at least five lights out in my ward. I think I said there were at least eleven lights out in my ward as I counted them. As it happens, there were twenty-eight lights out in my ward, but for the record, it should be eleven, not five.
Thank you. councillor Flux.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just on page forty-seven, on page eleven. councillor Daley called on members for domestic violence awareness week from the twentieth to the twentieth-sixth, and the Diva Don't Ignore Violence and Abuse Walk. I just wanted to announce that I myself, councillor Daley, Lesley Pyle, the domestic violence coordinator, other officers, and Contee and Town councillor Adam Shamley attended that. I am today wearing a white ribbon. I was given that event to publicise and so was there. And I would say it was a very positive morning in highlighting a very important issue. And I thank all those who were involved in organizing it.
Thank you. councillor Grimshaw.
Yes, page sixteen, there is a questionnaire with on the form of a query whether trade unions had been involved with the business chair advice response would be sent in writing. And that was to do with a pension meeting, and I still haven't received a response.
I can hand over to councillor Watson, who has looked into this. councillor Watson, wait for the microphone.
Yes, I can assure you and all the members of the pensions panel, which include two union representatives, can confirm that the unions were involved all the way through and they had absolutely no issues with it. Whilst I'm on my feet here, if I may, on the same subject, on page sixteen, with reference to the fourth bullet point from councillor Ledger. Councillor Ledger states that he wasn't informed or it was a... Says that the original discussions have been around the shared service. I took this on board and asked our principal accountant of the pensions panel to give me a copy of what had happened with meetings. And actually councillor Ledger, you may have forgotten, but on the sixteenth of February two thousand and seventeen at four p.m. you attended a meeting along with Grant Daley and the opposite leader to discuss pooling and merger. This was followed up by another meeting in March. So to say that it was not something that you're aware of is actually not strictly correct.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks. I am still of the same opinion. I was dealing with the shared service. There was no talk of merger at that time. And it was not brought to me and Grant himself. I certainly have no recollection whatsoever of that happening. It may well be, but I have no recollection of that happening, Chair.
Okay, councillor Grimshaw.
Thank you, Chair. With all due respect, I haven't had an answer as to why I couldn't have a response.
No idea. We'll look into that and try and help you with that. councillor Grant Daley.
I can speak as a member of the council here. Yeah, the meeting referred to by councillor Watson. The meeting referred to by councillor Watson regarding pooling and merger has nothing to do with the Solten State and the moving of officers from Solten State with a shared service with that authority. The pooling of pension funds is a much larger tool to use the funds of the pension fund by the government for infrastructure lending. The merger would be on much larger estates geared for something called Coles and Country. And that's what that initiative is about. It wasn't about global work. It was to do with the motion to try to retain some workers here in the country to help the pensioners of Northern Ireland.
Okay. Anything else on the minutes? Right, let's move on. Disclosure of Members' Interests. councillor Heppel.
I would like to declare an interest in item ten-one, as I am beneficially at the L G P, walking in L G P S. Now, I need some advice as to whether I should leave the room during discussion or remain. What's your personal interest?
Chairman, I'm sure I need the mic to respond, but I would advise that a declaration of a personal interest is sufficient in these circumstances, given the nature of the report.
That means we're going to get a few. I don't think I want the microphone to go around. Can you just... councillor Daley first?
A member, that's third on the mic, I can get to that four years or three years ago, or four years ago. I know quite a lot of councillors who are still...
Yeah, I know. councillor Daley, Grant.
At the last meeting, what was the dispensation, because so many ones, when it was...
I know.
Were involved in this, and to discuss matters so well in the pension fund and the wood referred to earlier. So I would suspect a scene of dispensation should actually...
Well, forgive me for not being able to readily recollect exactly what happened at the last meeting, but the power to grant dispensation relates only to the standards of me and myself as monitoring officer, and I cannot grant dispensations in relation to this category of interest. I think for completeness, forgive me, Chairman, if those members who believe they have an interest in relation to this particular issue, if they could just indicate to Karen Hadfield and she could note that...
Right, show of hands, show of hands. Excuse me, do you want to read them out?
Chairman, in retrospect, if members can just make Karen aware after the meeting, if that's okay?
I'm happy with that, right?
Didn't realise there were so many members.
Okay, any other members disclosures? Yes, councillor Jackson?
Yes, Chair, I disclose a personal but not traditional interest as a director of Arch in relation to item fourteen.
councillor Weir-Mao?
Chair, the same for myself.
Likewise, Chair.
councillor Reed, councillor Sharp?
Lady Chairman, I'll read the question in the first round presentation in the cabinet on Tuesday, the third December, regarding the Lord Hoxham Social Welfare Centre, as I am the chairman of that council.
Yeah, councillor Daley?
Chair, it's on again item fourteen. I am a director at Arch.
Right, now, through all that, can't see anybody else, let's... councillor Dickinson?
Just a query, I'm sure it's already been answered for others, but I'm not aware of the answer. Given that every member is now a member of planning committee, I'm assuming that we can proceed with the items relating to change in planning, terms and reference as we go along.
No, membership of committees of that nature don't constitute an interest that needs to be declared, councillor Dickinson.
Now, can we move on? Right, I'm going to move on. Announcements. I have the New Year Honours Award list. I'll read them out. O B E, Matthew Boyle, President and Chief Executive of Sevcon for Services to Engineering and Skills, Morbeth. John Strouda Shawcross for voluntary services to young people and youth clubs in the North East, Morbeth. M B, Mrs Annie Ellen Barr, founder of Annie Barr Associates for Services to Exports and Healthcare, Prudhoe. David Richard Beveridge Byrne for Services to the Magistracy and Community in Hexham. Geoffrey Alan Coates, social worker and member of Adoption Support Expert Advisory Group for Services to Children, Cramlington. Julie, Mrs Julie Dixon for Services to the Community in Northumberland. Headley George Heron for Services to Charity and the Community in Northumberland, that's Morbeth. Mrs Shirley Kang-Kowkski, project manager, H M Revenue and Customs for Services Estate Pension and Reform. And B E M Frank Eric Bow for Services to the Royal British Legion and the Community in Whitby, Anick. And Mrs Jean O'Hanlon, case worker, Northumberland branch of S S A F A Armed Forces for voluntary service to ex-service personnel and to the community in Anick. Is it in order that I write to them all and thank them on their behalf? Or congratulate them? Thank you. The other notice announcement I have, that is remembrance of the Holocaust Day on the twenty-fifth of January. Here, there will be more information on that event coming out. Correspondence, Grant, I've got you the northern farmer this time.
Chair, do you have a comment on that? You need to spend some more money because the farmer's weekly was a farmer I read in that...
Well, next time I'll get you the farmer's guardian, because I know you're a guardian reader, so... Right, other correspondence, I think councillor leader's got a letter to, or a letter to read up.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. After the last meeting, the council requested me to write to the government in relation to the Shared Prosperity Fund, which is the main source of structural funding when we actually leave the European Union. I did get a letter back from the Chancellor, and I got an even more detailed letter back from the Minister for the Northern Power, Harris-Jake Berry. I'll just read an extract, which will give the council some confidence. The government is committed to the creation of a UK Shared Prosperity Fund, which will seek to improve the UK's productivity and reduce economic inequalities across all four nations of the Union. It affords a fresh opportunity to focus investment according to our own priorities rather than those set by the European Union. We will aim to create a simpler fund, which is easier to access for local areas. The government is actually committed to consulting quite widely on how they're going to implement this fund, and they have already met with the Industrial Communities Alliance, where this whole issue came from. I'm still determined to actually make sure that there is as much devolved power as possible, because I don't believe, I think it's great that we're going to have the confidence that European funding will be replaced by this Shared Prosperity Fund, but I think we are the people in the North East of England and in Northumberland in particular to decide where best to apply those funds. So I'm still going to push for further devolution of this particular fund before it's implemented. Thank you.
Okay. Right, item six, questions. I'll take so many and see how long it takes, and I'll use my discretion on how quickly go on whether they go to the back. So question one on the agenda, from councillor G Hill to councillor V Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Does the current administration have any evidence to suggest that the prescription of methadone through drug recovery programmes in Northumberland is successfully treating drug addiction and improving lives? If so, what is it?
Councillor Hill, I hope you don't mind if I read the answer, because it's a little technical for me. Methadone and Bruc... I can't say that one, brucprinolpine are both prescribed as opioid substitute therapy. Their use is recommended by the National Institutes of Health and Clinical Excellence and the Drug Misuse and Dependence UK Guidelines on Clinical Management as part of a wider treatment and recovery plan, which includes psychosocial interventions and recovery support. To be recommended by N I S T, and intervention must be evidence-based and cost-effective. There's strong evidence from research that prescribing opiate substitutes can lead to reduction in the use of heroin and related harmful behaviours, such as sharing needles, theft, reduces hospital admissions, deaths, and the likelihood of misusing other substances. Research also demonstrates that engagement with treatment services promotes recovery and improved quality of life, improved wellbeing and social relationships compared with those still taking illicit substances. The research also shows that those in specialist drug treatment are far less vulnerable to risk of overdose and subsequent drug-related death. The Advisory Council on the Misuse of Drugs Recovery Committee, which is a national body established to advise government on drug policy, has concluded that alongside the protective nature of opioid substitution therapy, there is strong evidence that time limiting this therapy would result in a majority of users relapsing into heroin use. Substitution therapy is crucial, but is only one element of a comprehensive approach to achieve successful outcomes for people with substance misuse disorders. In summary, there's an extensive body of research which evidences that those illicit drug users receiving structured treatment, including O S T, are safer and achieve better outcomes than those who do not. Opioid substitution therapy is provided by Northumberland as part of a wider treatment system by Northumberland Recovery Partnership, based on evidence-based best practice.
Supplementary?
Thank you for the answer. I don't think that it has, what you've said has actually provided evidence of successful treating drug addiction, perhaps replacing heroin with methadone. Certainly not improving lives. The evidence that I've heard from methadone users is the very significant length of time that people have been kept on methadone, which is a zombie-like drug and in many ways is more harmful than heroin. There's also an alarming concern with links with suicides. So can I ask you to ask the House of Commons Screwd Need Committee to look at some specific facts, such as the average length of time that people have been kept on methadone, the link to suicide, and also the commercial interest in certain companies by continuing to have people on this drug?
I can certainly look into that and look to the Screwd Need Committee. I mean, there are people in Northumberland who haven't represented in six months, and that makes a big difference to the impact on the lives of those people. But certainly I can tell that further, councillor.
Thank you. councillor David Ledger, question two to Peter Jackson.
Thanks, Chair. In his opening speech of this administration, the leader praised the former chief executive officer of this council for leaving a strong and stable organisation. Can the leader therefore inform us why the council accounts have not been signed off and when he predicts this process will take place?
Thank you, councillor Ledger. Obviously, a lot of water under the bridge since the start of this council, and quite a number of aspects of the council's operation have become a lot more clear to us over the last six or seven months. I can assure you the council's accounts have been signed off. They were signed off by the council's audit committee on the twenty-second of November. But, and the council's accounts have now been filed. But the reason for the delay, and this is the first time ever that we've had to file the accounts with a qualifying statement for the year ending thirty-first of March two thousand and seventeen. In a highly unusual step, the council's auditors, E Y, refused to sign off the accounts without the qualification, because according to them, there were some significant weaknesses in proper arrangements for acting in the public interest, and evidence of the principles and values of sound governance were not appropriately applied to decisions taken for the year ended thirty-first of March two thousand and seventeen. This qualification actually relates to the council's Development subsidiary, Arch, of which you were then chairman, councillor Ledger. Another reason for the delay was that an Arch asset had to be revalued on the instruction of E Y. The previous administration through Arch had invested around one and a half million pounds in Ashington Town Football Club, which is chaired by the Labour Party National Chairman, Ian Labery, MP. And the auditors insisted that the one-point-nine-million-pound valuation of this asset that was in Arch's books at that time had to be revalued, and that revaluation reduced that by a massive one-point-five-million pounds to just four-hundred-thousand pounds, wiping one and a half million pounds off the council's assets. I think once again, this piece of information and proof reasserts the fact that actually Arch has not been adding any real value to the council over the period so far, and still is a source of extreme concern to all of us in the administration.
Supplementary? Skip that. Question three, councillor Julie Foster, to Nick Oliver, who will take it.
Thank you, Chair. Since the council announced an increase in council tax income for two thousand and seventeen eighteen, primarily due to fifteen hundred new homes being built, and a much higher new build figure predicted for this year, can the leader explain why pressure has been placed on parish councils to accept greater responsibility from N C C through current partnership arrangements, and why most of the increased tax income is not being spent on the place directorate to enhance services delivered by this all-purpose unitary authority and ensure our new residents receive the services they deserve and are paying for?
Thank you. This question sort of cuts across a number of portfolios, so I've been asked to answer it. I think the first point to make is that obviously building extra houses not only brings in additional council tax income, but it also puts additional strain on the services of the council and brings additional costs with it as well. Under this administration, no additional pressure and no additional responsibilities have been placed on town and parish councils. There are a number of current partnership arrangements in place that enhance core services. These core services have not changed in any locations since May this year, last year, two thousand and seventeen. Furthermore, the administration gave an undertaking at the Town and Parish Council Conference in October that when setting the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen budget, we wouldn't make negative changes to key frontline services in local services that would affect town and parish councils, and we're going to honour that commitment. It is our intention to include several growth items within the proposed eighteen-nineteen revenue budget in order to accommodate the increased demand on the waste services from housing growth and to ensure that this key frontline service continues to be consistently delivered to a high standard, and also to invest in improvements to both weed control and verge maintenance arrangements across the county. As an administration, we're committed to working closely with town and parish councils to make best use of all the resources available in order to deliver the best service outcome for local communities.
Supplementary? No, thank you. Right, great. Question four, councillor Daley to John Riddle.
Now that members have been informed by letter that the Dissington Garden Village project has reached a major milestone and fully complies with its projections, can the leader explain the next steps for this made-to-approved project, and when can we expect to see physical work commence?
Thank you, councillors. This is a planning-related question. I'll endeavour to answer it for you. I presume you're, when you say informed by letter, I presume you are referring to the email from Richard Robson to all members?
Well, Chair, I had a letter which was the same word as...
All right. Well, you know, I've got to be careful what I'm saying here. I'm somewhat surprised when it is, it's still a live planning application here, so we don't want to produce any decisions. But notwithstanding the minded-to-approve resolution from the Strategic Planning Committee in March two thousand and seventeen, the Dissington Garden Village outline planning application will need to be reconsidered by the Strategic Planning Committee, given that the withdrawal of the Northumberland Core Strategy in July, which provided emerging policy support for the proposal, represents a material change in circumstances since the previous resolution was made.
Okay, supplementary? councillor Dunworth for number five to John Riddle again.
Mr Leader, our Labour members wish to thank the council for taking steps to provide adequate educational facilities for the increasing school-aged children across South East of England and the rural coal field at the moment. However, current planning applications, maybe it's a Freudian slip, and population growth predictions show that this increase is not set to reduce until well after twenty forty. As things stand, this would mean many children in the areas that are expected to grow the bulk of this increase would face years of being taught in mobile classrooms. Can the leader confirm if there are any plans to build new schools or to extend existing buildings in the areas of high growth, such as New Hartley, Holywell, Antown, Ellington, Blyth, Bennington or Ashington? And I'm sure there are other areas.
councillor Riddle is going to answer this, because it comes under his portfolio.
Okay, thank you. The local authority has processes in place to monitor and monitor people places across the county to ensure that it fulfils its statutory duty to provide sufficient places. Part of this process includes the monitoring of new housing plans and developments where planning permissions have been granted. With regard to the South East of the county, at present, the county has secured grant funding from the Educational Skinnels Funding Agency, and we have already put in place plans to supply additional places in Blyth, Portonridge Primary School, New Delville County Primary School, Newsom Primary School. Cramlington Beacon Hill will be extended to become a two-form entry school from a one-form entry school. And Morbeth, additional places are being created at Morbeth Chantrey Middle School. We have also added an additional fifteen places per year group at Seton Delville First School to address these issues.
Supplementary?
I suppose my supplementary is really that I'm not talking about the here and now, that the question acknowledged, which moves have been made currently to address the current need, is actually what's being planned, because I think anybody who's involved with education at any level knows that there are huge pressures that are going to grow, that they're not going to be solved by the decisions that have mainly now welcomed.
That's a statement rather than a question, so...
No, I think I still am saying I haven't got an answer to the question about...
I'm happy to give you a response. While developers purchase land, this does not always mean that new housing will eventually follow. Even when new housing does follow, it only yields at a rate of thirty-two children per hundred houses. That's across all year groups from reception to year eleven. It is for this reason that the local authority closely monitors school population predictions, and to eliminate the waste of limited public resources only supplies additional places where there's a clear need to do so.
Right. I'm going to continue with questions to see how they go, because we're going quite well with them. So I'll go to councillor Heppel.
Thanks, Chair. Can the leader please explain whether his administration is serious about delivering a new core strategy and law and plan document by two thousand and twenty? And can he explain the consultation steps required to achieve completion within that timescale?
Again, this comes under the portfolio of councillor Riddle. Councillor Riddle?
Thank you, Chairman. As councillor Heppel is on the working group, I think he would know the answer to this, but the local development scheme, the L D S, which sets out a timetable for preparation of the new Northumberland Local Plan, was endorsed by Cabinet on the twenty-third of November this two thousand and seventeen, representing a very firm and clear commitment to preparation of the plan within the timescales set out in that document. They are on the public website for you to see. We are very confident that we can meet those timescales. We are actually working to see if that timescale can actually be condensed rather than extended, but we're very confident that we can complete it on that timeline.
Okay, any supplementary?
Yes, I have, Chair. Thank you for that, councillor Riddle. I've got a supplementary, just wanted to give this brief context of this...
Go on, briefly.
The recent note of time minded-to-approve devolution deal has a commitment to accelerate the delivery of new homes and support delivery in strategic sites. Now, this devolution deal, together with the removal of the protection against speculating of development in Northumberland by the withdrawal of the core strategy, probably means that we're going to get much more housing development in the county. How does councillor Riddle square this commitment with his administration's commitment to limit the number of dwellings built in that planned period of the core strategy? limit the number of dwellings built in that planned period of the core strategy to 90,500?
Right, thank you.
I don't, that doesn't necessarily follow what you're saying is true. It is true that the removal of the core strategy does immediately leave us a vacuum where there is a gap where speculative development could take place, but developers need time to actually get things off the blocks. And you're talking about the North of Time devolution deal here, lots of those things are all to work up yet, but in actual fact, the existing core strategy, I believe, was destined to fail at examination in public and this new combined document, which is a very condensed timescale, I believe will be delivered on time and will give us the protection we need.
Right, councillor Spillenbank?
Thank you. Can the leader explain what process was used to halt the Clickerman Bank project and what was the projected benefit level to the county of Northumberland if that project had been allowed in this forward to its natural conclusion?
It's going to be answered by councillor Riddle again, who's got a busy day at his portfolio.
Thank you councillors, wouldn't I? This is a little bit unusual coming for you, but never mind. The outline planning application for residential development on the Clickerman Farm site is currently being reviewed by the National Planning Case Work Unit to inform a decision by the Secretary of State on whether he wishes to call in the application for his own determination. The application has not been halted, as has been suggested, and rather is following due process, as would be normal, and is being referred to the NPCU for call and decision, given that the scheme represents a significant departure from the current development plan. The reason it was a departure was because that land was at that time in the green belt, it was against policy it was minded to approve in March 17 under the previous administration and it was referred to the National Planning Case Work Unit, as would be normal practice, before the elections in May.
Thank you, supplementary?
Yes, if you'd allow it, and I have indicated to councillor Riddle to hold up the, I had noticed at the point I'd wished to make, if you'd allow me. It's connected with this and other issues and clearly, both councillor Riddle and I recently attended a scrutiny meeting that was very heartening, the cross-party support to work together to ensure that here Northumberland planning department is put into practice as soon as possible. I simply make the point that for at least two years, our planning department and the members who serve on strategic planning are working with policies that have drunk at 10 years old, many of which are still valid, and so unknown. And I simply make the point, I would urge members, especially senior members, to be cautious about making statements regarding the use of land or particular applications, because there is a danger, you could drift into a position on a major application where it could look as a predetermination taking place. I would urge everyone to be cautious, we all have strong views of major planning issues, but for heaven's sake, let's not make the job of the planning department or those members serving on strategic planning any more difficult than it will be over the next two years. Let's work together on this one.
I'll take that as a statement, not a question, so you're doing...
I must, I must make it for the member could concur with those principles.
There are several principles councillor Heppel might, and I would concur with them. Members do need to be very careful not to be seen to be predetermining any applications.
Councillor Davy to Veronica Jones?
Yes, I'm pleased to have caught another little bit of a rest, David, so that... Councillor Jones, as NHS funding in Northumberland is becoming increasingly difficult for residents to get timely appointments at local GP surgeries, this is particularly worrying in south-east Northumberland, where residents are waning their feet and facing extra pressure on A&amp;E facilities, especially in Cramlington. Would councillor Jones make representation with the NHS to raise some issues, to raise the issue of availability of appointments at surgeries? And would you come back to the next council meeting either with a representative from the Thunia NHS to explain what's going wrong, or come back with an action plan to deal with this acute problem which may be putting lives at risk? And it's just a matter of timing to interview the national press, and I knew this question several weeks ago, I believe.
Councillor Jones?
Thank you. Well, NHS didn't actually collect data about the number of GP appointments that are available, there actually, there's no reason that the number's not been falling in Northumberland. Indeed, there's actually been a recent increase as a result of the National Programme of Extending Access to Primary Care. Practices across Northumberland were required to increase their opening hours and the number of appointments available from October 2017, and at least 960 additional appointments each week have been available over the past few months. The most recent national survey of patients' views from their GP practices carried out in July 2017 found that 86% of patients had been able to get an appointment when they wanted to see their GP or nurse from their GP surgery. That's slightly above the national average, which is actually 84%. Patients' views about how easy it is to arrange an appointment do vary between practices and we're aware of that, both in south-east Northumberland and elsewhere, but there's no reason to think there's a particular problem. NHS data suggests that people in areas nearest to any A&amp;E department often choose to go there rather than to their GP practice, because they see that that is the quickest way to get help regardless of the actual availability. The experience of the new hospital in Cramlington has followed this pattern, with people living nearby making the most of it. You do suggest that an NHS representative comes to the council meeting, but to be honest, it is the scrutiny committee that would look into any issues on the health services within Northumberland. Your question seems to imply that Northumbria NHS is responsible for primary care, which is actually commissioned by NHS England and the CCG. I think you probably meant, I mean councillor Davy, I think you probably meant the North umberland CCG. The CCG will actually be doing a presentation at the next Health Overview and Scrutiny on the 16th of January about primary care and access, which is really what you're looking at. The regulator is actually NHS England, and if there is a continuing issue with appointments, it would be through NHS England and the, that we looked at and the Overnewer Scrutiny Committee would be able to call it into that.
Okay, supplementary?
Yes, I've got a supplementary. I'm pleased you've corrected me on the CCG line. The supplementary is about the actual, the person who the CCG should be on the supplementary and bring some answers with them. Can you explain why the successful holistic team arrangements in Blyth have been shelved? The GPs, they're now operating as an amalgam of a group of several practices from one building and their holistic teams and district ministers, other practitioners, people who can help, are operating from another building. It's now falling apart as well as not being able to get the findings adopted in the south-east with number holistic arrangements which have been so successfully brought through.
Thank you. Can I just ask, is this the practice, the railway practice in Blyth?
Well, it's one of the practices in Blyth, I hope they know, appear to be working from one building and their teams are from the other, and that's not good practice at all.
I am well aware there's been some mergers to, which is now the largest practice, and they're, but to be honest, they'd both scored badly on the patient survey, I'm well aware of that. One issue over the past year has been some systems problems associated with all that merging together, which have caused difficulties in making appointments. The issue is being addressed, but I'm happy to keep monitoring it.
Okay, and councillor Davy, I did bring this up at the Health and Wellbeing Board a month ago, then I think we should be looking at this as well, so we're on your case. I'll continue. Question nine, councillor Lynne Grimshaw to the leader. It's going to Richard Wehrmuth, this one.
Thank you Chair. In September, the Whistleblower highlighted that the Arch board were represented with detailed plans for a 4,000 hole super village outside Pegswood. So four months after taking control of the council and that of the company, they promised to scrap. Can the leader explain how using Arch possibly under a different name, which he now controls, to build thousands of homes across the county, is consistent with his promise to limit housing numbers, scrap Arch and help private sector developers to make a profit in the county?
Thank you very much for the question councillor Grimshaw, it's a bit of a shame, isn't it, that Whistleblower's in Arch are a little bit like pussies, you wait literally for years and then loathe them come all at once. But if I might just turn to your question, I've written to yourself and to councillor Townsend about this previously, this being the land between Pegswood and Ashington, the acquisition...
Excuse me, that actually isn't the question, the question is, can you explain how using Arch possibly under a different name? I'm not asking about the...
You don't want me to answer the first question?
The question is can, starts from can, councillor Wehrmuth.
Right, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood, because obviously you make reference to the 4,000...
Hang on, hang on, hang on, please councillor Grimshaw, can you just let him answer and then will you have a supplementary? Or I can do like councillor Dickinson used to do and shut me up by saying I've already had it. And I know I've named you Scotty.
No, well the reason, the reason I mention that is just to make sure, because it is referenced in the question and I provided an answer to that previously in writing. So, onto the wider question, and you make reference to housing across the county, but fail to reference the fact that in your own core strategy, that you planned for 26,000 houses or so across the county, deleting swathes of green belt against the wishes of local people, the upshot of which was to make the county a paradise for developers as they were pursuing applications in the county. A tad insult to injury, of course, you were doling out money, would seem, up to 75 million pounds to one single house builder and there were plans for a further 200 houses here on County Hall against the wishes of the people of Morpeth and of the County Hall to justify your multimillion pound HQ that you wanted to build a few miles along the road. Turning to the administration here, I mean by contrast, we're actually bringing about a local plan that's fit for purpose, putting back that green belt which your party deleted. And we have documents in place to show the actual necessary houses that are required over what will become the local plan's period, and that will be far less than the 26,000. When it comes to scrapping Arch, obviously we're replacing it with a company that is going to be fit for purpose and will help deliver the houses that the county actually needs, which are affordable houses, and I hope that we can all agree that that's something that we should be pursuing with the utmost urgency.
Is there supplementary?
Thank you Chair. Yes, I don't know if that's going to be possible when you've made the statement about, you know, you're helping the developers, when you have no core strategy to actually do that. And I think that would probably increase the developments, not decrease them, so I would just like to know how you intend to do that. Councillor Wehrmuth, thank you.
Well, I don't know if it's really something for myself, councillor Riddle's already addressed this point, but I'll nevertheless be happy to give it a bit of a go in addition. When we've looked at what we're doing with the core strategy, we've heard already that it's going to be in place in a matter of years, there's a very small period of time where there's a policy that needs to be put in place through consultation with the public, through the issue of draft documentation, and it begins to pick up weight very quickly. We've already taken steps through the cabinet to look at housing numbers and to make sure that there's a robust case there in terms of the demonstrable housing need, and I think that we're increasingly well protected as a county, much better than we would have been if we just left the door open to 26,000 houses, which is what you wanted in the first place.
Okay, right, I had allocated half, up to half an hour, but I better not cut councillor Dickinson off, so councillor Dickinson.
I welcome the briefing scheduled for February relating to the dreadful implementation of universal credit that is planned to hit Northumberland residents this year, despite calls to the Tory government to pause and fix the issues experienced so far. Will he extend the briefing to invite third sector organisations who will pick up the brunt of the face-to-face trauma experienced by residents?
Councillor Oliver?
Yes, I'll take this question. It's true to say that there have been concerns expressed in Westminster by all parties about the rollout of universal credit, and therefore it was good to see in the Chancellor's November budget statement that he's made some very important concessions, reducing the working times for universal credit, a more generous package of advanced payments, and also extending housing benefits during the transition period from the old system to the new system. In terms of the actual briefings, they are intended for members only as an information exercise on the rollout of the universal credit for service for this county, which is scheduled to be in November and December of this year. An updated brief will also be done nearer the implementation dates. In addition to this, a universal credit steering group has been set up, and that group held its first meeting on the 23rd of November last year. The group consists of representatives of services within the council, including benefits, housing, policy, welfare rights, poverty lead, as well as representatives from Arch, from the Healthcare Trust, from Places For People, from the Citizens Advice Bureau, age concerned, BRIC, housing associations and some private sector landlords. The DWP also attend, and a further meeting is due to take place of this steering group on the 17th of January. So as a result of these initiatives, there is no further need to have third sector organisations at this briefing as they're up to speed with developments and are working with the council to ensure as soon as transition is possible.
Supplementary?
I think councillor Oliver, welcome the fact that those organisations are participating in a working group that I was not aware of, others may well have been. Despite councillor Oliver's positive changes listed by the Chancellor, some of us think that families being asked to wait over five weeks for money is still an issue that drives families into poverty and debt, and will certainly do that to Northumberland residents based on the additional impact of the rural nature. My question is, will the leader of this council confirm that this council will not evict or penalise any family that has fallen into arrears because of universal credit?
I'm not sure that we can make such a blanket commitment, but I think what we will do is we'll work very hard across all departments within the council and with all of our partners to help everybody through this transition period.
Thank you. Councillor Dun to councillor Huma.
Thank you Chair. My question is for councillor Huma. I understand that this administration has been reviewing library provision within the county. We have seen more than 478 libraries closed since 2010, over 8,000 library workers have lost their jobs. I strongly believe that our libraries have huge local value and must be protected, they do much, much more than just loan books. In Lymouth, our library is currently only open for two afternoons, nine hours a week, but nevertheless, we regard it as a vital facility for the village and would welcome its development to widen its attraction to potential users within not only Lymouth, but also the surrounding villages. Does councillor Huma agree with me that libraries are indeed an essential service in our community and that this council has a duty therefore to provide a library service that is fit for purpose?
Councillor Huma?
Thank you for your question. I think it's fair to say that the current library service inherited by this administration is in part fragmented and dysfunctional in its current form. Some library staff work for Act of Northumberland, as you may know, and others work for the Northumberland County Council in two separate departments. Some libraries are standalone, some are integrated and some are co-located. The story, the picture is very different across the county. This has impacted greatly on the level of service to our residents and the users of these libraries, and it's also resulted in quite low staff morale within the service. The library service review is aimed to ensure that Northumberland has a modern library service which supports all of the residents across our county. The library service review has been extensive and is near to reaching some conclusions and some recommendations which will be considered by Cabinet in due course. It's important to this administration that our library service provides the most comprehensive service that it can within the resources that it has available to it, and further details of the library service review... of the Library Service Review and its associated conclusions and recommendations will be made available in the very, very near future. As a personal message to you and the award that you represent, if you want to talk about that in the future when those recommendations are made, then I'm very happy to have that conversation with you.
Supplementary, honours?
Yes, thank you. I welcome councillor Huma's comments, and I think she does agree with me that libraries are an essential part of this. Will this council, or does this council therefore commit to providing funding for library services in the long term and to maintaining an adequate level of resources and paid library professionals, and to stopping any outsourcing of the management of our libraries by volunteer groups or private companies? Will it provide a service that is acceptable to all?
Councillor Huma?
Thank you. I think it's important to say since 2015 up until May this year, there has been significant changes in the library service. Staffing levels have reduced, the floor space, the footprint of the services reduced, visitors have decreased by over 11.5%, the number of books that have issued have been down by 31%, memberships declined by 12%, and 51% of current registered users are currently inactive. But despite these declines, there is an increase of over 52% of users registering for digital My Library services. So the picture is very fluid, it's changed a lot in the last two years, a lot of the provision made by the county council has changed. The one thing I can promise you at this point is, we want a fit-for-purpose library service. The library review will give us those recommendations, they'll be considered by this council, and we will get the best service we possibly can for the residents of this county.
Thank you. Right, let's move on to item seven. We have received the minutes of cabinet meetings held on. This is page 35. Tuesday the 7th of November. Anybody on this meeting? 23rd of November? Nobody, and the 12th of December. Are we happy to take those? Agreed? Right, okay. Item eight, receive, consider the minutes of the following committees. Item one, corporate services, so I have councillor Bone.
Okay, after all that exciting build-up, I would simply like to move the minutes of the corporate services, economic growth, overview scrutiny committee, pages 63 to 70.
Anything on those pages? Can't see anybody. We'll be going to Guy Renner-Thompson next for the family and children's services, pages 71 to 86. Councillor Renner-Thompson.
Hello, Chair. We have two meetings over this time. The first one was on Tuesday 31st of October, which mainly dealt with Actington First School, the honour of James Calvert Spencer Federation of the proposed closure as of Christmas. The scrutiny committee decided to postpone closure until the 31st of August, so to keep school open for the rest of the year. It's good, it shows that the scrutiny system does work, you know, grows things and they carry through.
Chair, can I just ask a point of order, please? Has the councillor moved the minutes and given a brief update on the meeting wasn't asked?
Sorry, say it again?
That's happened.
The councillor's moved the minutes and given an order view to the council to a meeting wasn't asked, on doing that.
Well, give the microphone to councillor Wallace, he chaired the meeting.
Thank you, Chair. I chaired the meeting.
Can you stand up, please, councillor?
Thank you, Chair. I chaired the meeting. Can I move the minutes, please?
Thank you. Anything on the minutes, councillor? Nope. Right, bring the microphone back down. And the next one?
The next one was on Tuesday 16th of November. The main item there was the new proposal to put an onus on the developers. If the local school has a capacity of less than 5%, the council will seek a declaration at Christmas. So that was the next one.
Okay, any questions on any of that? I can't see any hands, so let's move to councillor Jeff Reid for communities in place, pages 87 to 90. Councillor Reid?
Just move the minutes of the communities in place, movement scrutiny committee, ask the way down to pages 87 and 90.
Any comment? Can't see anybody. Let's, the microphone goes to Jeff Watson for the minutes of health and wellbeing, pages 91 to 120.
Thank you, Chair. This refers to two meetings. The meeting on the 2nd of October...
3rd.
Sorry. The two meetings anyway, there's one, the last meeting I have no comment on at all. The first meeting was refers to Roxbury, just so as the main point, just let members know that we refer this to the Secretary of State for the decision. The Secretary of State has asked us to justify those decisions. A letter has been put together at the moment to reply to that, ask for information.
Okay, councillor Bridget?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I obviously attended the meeting on the 17th of October relating to Roxbury Community Hospital, and quite frequently in this chamber you will witness criticism coming from both sides and from various political perspectives. One of the things that I would like to say is, the scrutiny committees of this council are an excellent example of cross-party working, and the meeting that took place on the 17th of October was just that. And I would specifically like to say thank you, because I haven't done publicly as of yet, to councillors Foster, Lowry, Moore, Nisbet, and Simpson for actually having the courage to refer the decision to the Secretary of State. They were a fantastic example of what can be achieved by local representatives and cross-party working, and I thank them very much. And you mentioned the letter that is now being sent to the Secretary of State. Will that be shared with members of this council and obviously the local member?
Councillor?
I'm sure that that will become available once it's issued to the Secretary of State.
Yes, yes. Yes, councillor Deale?
And can I go to the minute on 3rd of October, 23.2. People have been on the council a lot of times and always before, year after year, do not wish to allow ambulance response times. And our councillors, the at-home, or the time there, who understand the reason why I'm speaking today. One of the big things is, you've probably seen in the news, and it's been headlines the last two days, about the lack of facilities in the hospitals, they're having problems, they're now cancelling operations. We have issues with ambulance response times, and we're having a real issue across the area because of the aging population, the flu epidemic, and it's a roller-on knock-on effect. Our area in Tindale is obviously always concerned because we have rural areas. However, those areas closer to the centre ought to have more complicated ambulance response times. Can I ask this council, we ask the ambulance service to come and give an update to all the area committees on their new response times, but also inform us of the issues they are having at the moment. Everybody in our area is very concerned, and I know people on this council who will support that, and I hope that everybody will support that we can go to the next area council meetings, committee meetings, and have representatives from the ambulance services, and also if we could have figures about the position as far as the hospitals are concerned, especially the emergency services. It would be helpful also if we could have the ambulance audit for last year to see where the issues are with the differences in the ambulance response times. Can I ask the council, please, to move that we can actually take this forward to the next area council meeting?
Councillor Deale, I've been informed that the agendas are out for this January round, but we can look at the March round where we can get other NHS services to the area committees as well as the ambulance trust. Yeah, at the moment, the services are all flat out, so I think, you know, we will put it in the pipeline for March or that area. They are flat out at the moment, we know that, so that's what we'll do. Councillor Deale?
Sorry, thank you. Can I ask if I have any more further representations, who they should contact at this council?
If it's operational, we would go to, if it's an operational issue, we need to go to North East Ambulance Service or the relevant provider directly, because otherwise there's a delay built into a response to a patient or family. If it's of a strategic nature or a scrutiny issue, then either the... Sorry. I was just saying there, if it's a, if it's a operational patient or family issue, it should be redirected directly to either North East Ambulance Service or the relevant NHS provider. That's to prevent any delay in a response. If it's about a strategic issue, i.e. the functioning of health services across a local authority area, either to the scrutiny committee, or if it's a specific issue somebody wants looking at, then it would be referred to myself or Vanessa Bean-Bridge.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir?
This is something I'm particularly chasing on my board, as some of you will know, I've been in touch with you, chasing up ambulance response times, not in the busy winter period, I hear it's not. And I'd very much like to look at a copy of the new national ambulance response times, when that will be available.
We'll get that, we will be sent that to all members, and it will eventually end up as scrutiny, as most things do, and we will get that included in the reports that will come to the area committees. Anything else on the minutes? Right. Next one is health and wellbeing board, which is me, pages 121 to 126. Can't see anybody. Next one, audit committee. Yes, councillor?
Thank you. Can I just point out for the completeness of the minutes, I was in attendance at that meeting, so could I be added on to that, please?
We can make a note of that, Karen. Councillor Dickinson?
Yeah, mine was just on the safeguarding adults annual report. Page 122, it was basically just to mention that, you know, in this particular time where safeguarding for adults and children is so important, I really welcome the improvement in performance for the 2016-17, and really pay thanks to the Chair, Paula Mead, for all her efforts.
Thank you. Audit, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Chair. In moving the minutes of the meeting on the 22nd of November, the leaders already spelt out that despite delays and some changes, the accounts were eventually approved. It's for various reasons to be discussed soon, it's difficult to have confidence in what was inherited from the previous administration. Also, just to clarify, just to clarify, on page 133, a discussion ensued after the review of external inspection reports, adult and children's services. Members of the audit committee, because obviously audit, we're not just talking about risk in terms of financial risk, but we discussed a range of risks that follow schools that become academies and continue to fail, not just financial but educational but also safeguarding. And it was mentioned that there could be discussion to have a report done by the Children's Overview Scrutiny Committee. I since found out that the audit committee did indeed do a similar report under the previous chair, so I just wanted to clarify that. But otherwise, I'm approving these minutes.
Councillor Davy?
The second bullet point, where it says in here that the Disington scheme was no longer going ahead, is that a referral to the Disington Garden Village scheme?
Councillor Hill?
Then, then I need to follow on, and you've already been spoken to by councillor Switherbank today regarding determination of planning applications. This to me looks like it's determined not to go ahead.
Can I just intervene? Surely it's the car park that's referred to, not the scheme itself?
No, it says the scheme, and the Chair of Audit has confirmed that it's the scheme.
We can, we will seek clarification of the minute.
Yeah. Could I have the clarification in writing, Chair?
Yeah, why not? How else would you let? One second. Councillor Deale?
Right, thank you. As Chair of Audit for the last, I don't know, four years, I would like to say just one or two points. First of all, the auditors, annual audit letter is always interesting, and I think that the council, I hope that all of you have had the opportunity to read it. This council, this administration has asked for a review, which was undertaken, and if the council, the external auditors found no issue, they thought that maybe we could have the budget prepared in a better way, so I will look forward to seeing if that happens. Secondly, they did do actually value for money, and they did look at various things such as the Arch, the Cranlington shops, can't remember. Anyway, there was no issues with that, it was value for money, so that was quite sound, and I was pleased with that. The statement of accounts, which is near the end, which sometimes works with the annual government statements, it has been mentioned over and over again that Arch is going to be dissolved, or Arch has been, it's been decided by the board that Arch is to dissolve. And I do, I'm glad to see that in the statement of accounts, a new paragraph has been added, and it says it was agreed by the Arch Board on the 17th of November to dissolve the company. However, as Arch is a wholly owned subsidiary of the council, the council must consider the decision of the Arch Board and make appropriate recommendations through its own decision-making process. And I hope that will happen, and I hope people, well, I presume we have a conversation about this, which I presume we are having a conversation about, that people will be able to put their thoughts thoroughly forward, because this is a big, big issue. Just to say thank you very much to everybody, I'd like to say thank you to the internal auditor and all the officers who we work for, and I wish everybody well in the future. Can I just ask one thing, though? Likewise, councillor Davy has discussed the technical services one, which is the Ponte Island Disington Garden Village relief road. Also, that's come out, is the 15 million pounds for the new car park, which is mentioned in the report, and I'd... in the report, and I just wondered, have you a new, are you having new thoughts about that, or are we not going to have a car park, new car park in Hexham? Or what? I just think that I would like to know what that's about.
Anybody? Glenn? Doesn't it do with Hexham, I'm told? Do you want to... Councillor?
I'll just go back to an earlier point. Councillor Dale mentioned that the external auditor had found no issues. That's plainly not correct. I think there were two significant issues. There was a qualifying statement for the first time ever in the council's accounts, and there was also a revaluation of an asset wiping one and a half million pounds off the council's balance sheet. So to me, yeah, there may not be issues to the previous Chair of the Audit Committee, but to me they are significant issues.
Can I just take back that, please? Because if you listen to me, what I said was apart from Arch. And it's the business about Arch that is the concern. And they are, the Arch is the, they did find issues, but not of impropriety, they have not stated in their impropriety. They have found different things. I can read out exactly what they've said if you want me to read it out, but there was allegations of impropriety, and they have not actually found that exactly. But I just think that we need to discuss that in confidential in the pink paper.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you, councillor Dale. What I would say is, we will be discussing things in a confidential section. I think the, I can say frankly that the governance of Arch was absolutely shocking, and there will be an audit of audit what went wrong. In terms of propriety, what I would say is the clue is, before making any firm statements, there is currently police investigation, that's why we can't say any more.
Thank you. Right. I think, I think we're treading on... Go on.
Please note that it has been noted in the auditors' report that the Audit Committee were actually looking at reviewing the governance of Arch in this coming year, and it is stated in that.
Well, I'm sure that we'll find all this in time. Right, let's move on. Devolution working group, councillor Jackson. Councillor Reed.
You all know this is my favourite subject. If you ever get a microphone, you feel really standing in a club just about to sing, but anyway. Yes, I won't. I'm a bit disappointed actually at these minutes, because they don't, for me, for the first time, I was there, and I don't think these minutes reflect at all the mood of the meeting. They certainly don't reflect my mood anyway. I could go on for hours about everything that I think is wrong with this, but all I will say is, on page 142, where it says deal content, what my query was, someone else might have mentioned about inflation, but what my query is, it's not £20 million a year for 30 years, it's £20 million for five years, and then if the government think you haven't spent it properly, you aren't going to get any more. So it's not £600 million, it's £20 million for five years. And on top of that, the cost of the mayor's office, which you want to argue about it, but be about a million pounds I would have thought, has to come out of that £20 million. So it's not £20 million, it's £19 million. So I think these minutes have been sanitised, for want of a better word. There is not one real criticism. All this is, is laid out about how wonderful it is. There are a lot of pitfalls in this deal, there's a lot wrong with it. And, well, for a start, I would never have an elected mayor, as you know. I think it's a complete and absolute waste of time, and they will not be able to fully encompass all of the residents of this area. And again, it's not north of Tyne, because there's more of Northumberland south of the Tyne than the combined areas of Newcastle and North Tyneside. But I shall just say one more, two more things. The transport thing on page 143, Northumberland will lose its membership of that, because the new authority will only have three places, and one of them has to be the mayor. And the other thing that I don't like about it is that the architects of the deal, the present leader and the previous leader are both on this working group, and I don't think they should be. I think it should just be backbench members, and if they want to know something on a political edge, then these two people should be asked to come and answer questions, they shouldn't be part of it.
Right, pass the microphone to councillor Hill. Right, I've got a list coming, so keep going. Yeah, just to worry about your hand. Previous leader, he didn't name him. But I will allow you to speak if you want to speak to him.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, clarification, 144, when it talks about undertaking consultation, is the consultation going to involve a public referendum?
So can you take it to councillor Davy and then Ruffhead?
Chair, I'd just like to remind councillor Reed, and I don't mind naming him so he can come back on this, that it is not the role of a minor member of a coalition to guide the way that another party, the largest opposition party on this council directs, the whole group directs their people who will sit on this panel. I don't get involved in liberal politics, and he should not get involved in ours. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Ruffhead and councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chairs. The member who brought this motion to create this group in the first place, I sort of welcome that this has actually gone ahead. And just to highlight a couple of problems, a couple of issues from the minutes and myself, in reference to councillor Reed, the name of the new authority is yet to be determined, so we've still got hope that it could be called South of Tweed.
You took that word joke from me.
And in terms of devolution as well, not just looking at the north of Tyne devolution, I hope this group also looks at the Borderlands Initiative, because I kind of say this line quite a lot, for many years, Barrick has been neglected by this authority, and sort of, since the demise of the foreign council in the 70s actually. And Borderlands Initiative and the north of Tyne devolution actually allows Barrick to get money and funding from both sides of the border, and actually be recognised as the true gateway between England and Scotland. Thank you for that.
Councillor Dale?
Thank you very much. And can I mention just one, two things? Transport. It is important that the Northumberland County Council do have an input into the Transport Committee. One of the things we do have is concessionary fares, and I was on the NECA Audit Committee for four years. One of the big issues I had a turmoil fight with, and I agreed and worked with Durham, was actually the concessionary fares. We need to ensure that we can establish that and that they don't get lost. The other thing is, just to add a little bit of caution, I have no issues about the devolution deal, a little bit upset as some people are because it's north of Tyne and we all, a lot of us live south of Tyne, but never mind about that. What I do have an issue is about the statement of having £20 million a year for revenue. And can I just remind you, over the last, since 2008, we must have had about £180 million per year taken out of our revenue fund, and I don't know what North Tyneside had taken out, or indeed Newcastle City Council. And this year, between 2018 and I think 20, we have to find approximately £30 million. So I do hope that the committee or the mayor, whoever it is, goes out and fights for a better deal, because I don't think this is a good deal at all, not for all of this, not for the whole of the three councils.
Councillor Dickinson?
Thank you, Chair. As Vice Chair of this working party, we have confirmation that it will be a true working party, as confirmed by the Leader of Council. I take a different opinion, having the current leader, as much as it pains me, and the previous leader together on that working group, who have both been involved in that deal-making process and fighting for Northumberland's case, it's good to have them on the working group. I look forward to the referendum within that working group on renaming it and including the words Jurridge Bay somewhere. Thank you.
What's that, east of Jurridge Bay? Councillor Reed? Were you named?
No, you don't have to.
The only trouble with calling it south of Tweed is that Barrick's north of the Tweed, but we'll not, we'll not go there.
Will they get upset?
Well, you know, I think geography's important, and I really do think it shows an arrogance and an ignorance by central government that are just going to bundle us all together other northernists, let them get on with it. The only other thing I meant to say before was about another councillor, I mentioned this earlier, the mayor will be in charge of strategic housing. The mayor will decide where these houses are going to be built, and if you haven't got a core strategy in place, you're going to get stung. And if, if, if any of you don't believe what I'm saying about the, what's in this deal, get Appendix G from the Cabinet meeting on December the 12th, and actually read it and see what you're being sold. There's more pucks in there than you've had off dinners.
Councillor Jax?
Right, right, thank you, Chair. Well, obviously there's been quite an extensive debate about this, and then one or two myths have been put around, but I can't lie for too long.
Hang on, that's, what's your point of order? I didn't catch it, aye, but Peter, I don't speak. Right, well, and you didn't send me a Winter Festival card this year. Councillor Jax?
Oh, right, okay. Yeah, one or two myths have been put around. The first is, I'm really surprised at councillor Reed being as anti-democratic as he is being, and obviously not agreeing with his colleagues in the rest of the north east of England. Because actually, these powers, and they're quite extensive, are actually being given from Whitehall, that they decided these, all of these issues are decided by mandarins in Whitehall at the moment. Well, they're going to be devolved to this small area, and a mayor will be elected, whoever that is, actually will be accountable to the electorate ultimately, but also to a cabinet made up of members of the three authorities involved. So that, that person is very accountable. We've seen the success of some of these deals in other parts of the country, where that mayor can actually speak to government with the voice of authority, because that's an elected person. So we get Andy Burnham, for example, in Manchester, we get Andy Sweet in the West Midlands. They're getting a better deal for their areas from central government than we are at the moment, and we need to get in that game fairly quickly. The reason for the working group is because there's a lot of detail in the deal. The first meeting was actually to present that detail to the members of the working group, so that they were much better informed about all of the various issues and all of the pots of money available. It's not just about the £20 million a year, which actually is promised in the deal for a 30-year period, but it's also about control of further education funding, which is something like £25 million a year, and that will be devolved to us to decide locally from next year onwards. And a lot of other things within it. So there will be a housing deal, there's no money specified for that, but we will get money to build more affordable housing and more housing for rent for our local people, and it will be wrong for us to turn that down. It's about accelerating that part of the housing market that the private sector won't deliver at the moment. And also within the deal, we will be the first rural growth pilot in the whole country, and that means an awful lot to Northumberland, because we've got towns right across North umberland that need to be resurrected, they need a new life, and this will give us the funding for them. I mentioned, well, yeah, strategic housing was mentioned, there is nothing within the deal that gives the mayor powers over strategic housing. It's actually about delivery of existing housing development, on a quicker and a more affordable basis. Strategic housing is actually no more than the existing duty to cooperate that we have with the other authorities anyway. And finally, within the deal, both the Leader of the Labour Group and myself fought very hard to include the Ashington-Blyth timeline, and that will make a major difference to about half of the whole population of Northumberland. It really will open up that area south and east of Northumberland, and that is one reason alone to vote for, but that's actually only a small part of the deal. So I'm willing to talk to people about the detail, because there's a lot more than we've talked about today, and I hope we continue this debate as the months and weeks go on. Thank you.
Chair, you asked my question.
No, there won't be a referendum, because it was actually part of a government policy, and they were elected on the back of that as part of their manifesto. So there has been a democratic input into that decision already, and it's been implemented in many other parts of the country on that basis. So the idea of an elected mayor is actually only a small part of the deal, and I think that councillor Davy might concur with that. It's actually the powers to decide locally and have the funds to really make a difference, is that's what it's all about.
Right, okay. Item nine, notice of motion. In accordance with the rules, councillor Davy?
Well, Chair, I'll, sorry. I'll speak after councillor Davy.
Yeah, okay.
No, I'll speak after you. I'll just, yeah. Chair, as a rule, I wouldn't read my motion out, I rarely ever do, because everyone has it in front of them, but since I've been televised today, I'm a boring ramble.
You're very, you're very smart.
And start a debate. This council notes that the various, the emergence of various strands of social media is both a positive and a negative way of communicating the role of councillors and the policies of council. Many local authorities have specific policies to explain and regulate the use of social media, and this council supports the proposal to form a cross-party councillor group to bring forward a social media policy which will provide transparency and certainty in the use of social media across the council and its partners. Currently, there's no overarching policy to provide a framework for the authorised use of social media in developing and communication policies, in developing communication policies and actions of the county council, which creates a significant risk for this authority. Now, today, we've been filmed, the councillors that are sitting in here who were formerly on Blyth Valley Council were filmed for donkeys, you know, it went on for ages. But as I've explained to my group in the past, the Blyth Valley situation is where we are not at this moment in time. A suggestion was put forward by Cabinet, and Wayne Daly was one of the councillors involved, in forming a policy on the filming of council, and it went through various scrutiny panels and various items, and eventually the council was filmed. Once the policy had been put in place, that policy, there is old fashioned, because we didn't have all of the instantaneous social media that we have today. What we need to do as a group of councillors within this room is find out who owns the pictures that are on there, to find out how we're going to use the pictures that are on there, and find out how we're going to deal with people who misuse and mislead the public with the photographs that will be on these screens right across the country. Because that's what other councils have done with their policies, and we need to have a look at a number of policies and get something together to really make sure that we are the best at it, and not the worst at it. Today, of course, I'd have been difficultly parting, because I saw the Tory makeup vans and hairdressers were all sitting outside, but I'm sure in the future you'll develop a core strategy based on good makeup in offices before you come down here. So I'll pass it over to my second man.
I've got councillor Jax.
I'd be happy to second the motion.
Right, the motion.
So I don't need to ramble on anymore, I'll pass the mic to you.
Right, I think it gives... Right, I think it gives, if you've got a leader and a former leader, it gives a bit more solace.
Yeah, I did read the motion, and I think essentially it's very non-political, I think we're looking at the best interest of the council, and actually not just ourselves. So I'm very happy to form a cross-party working group here, that doesn't necessarily have to include the two leaders of the major parties, but.
Or the previous leader.
Or even the previous leader, yeah. But, yeah, I think it's something we should have a look at. I think one thing that we should probably note is that we've actually already got a guidance note on the use of social media by members. But I think, I take the point that none of us have probably read this document or remember seeing it for about five or six years. It does need a refresh, things do change, and we've got this issue today of televising and broadcasting our council meetings, which I think is a very healthy thing for us to do, but we do all need clear guidelines on how that information is going to be used by all of us and by the council in the future. So I think for our own sakes and for the council's sakes and for the public's sake out there, we do need to have a very serious look on a cross-party basis about this whole issue, and that's why I'm happy to second the motion. Thank you.
Right, it's seconded. Any debate? I've got councillor Ledger and councillor Dale.
Thank you, Chair. And on that situation, I didn't mind giving way to you, although some of my friends here might not be too happy about it, but it's important that we get it right. I chaired a public meeting in this chamber last year on behalf of the PCC, who was meeting the people of Northumberland. There was a gentleman came and asked if he could film the meeting. I didn't have a problem with it, providing that, as it was a public meeting, that there were members of the public who might not want to be filmed. And on the strength of that, the meeting went ahead. Unfortunately, during the course of the meeting, the gentleman was not very helpful to his own cause, and it was occasion, I didn't switch him off, the members of the public switched him off and asked if he could be removed from the chamber, or words to that effect. So it is very, very important that we do get right, to make sure that the misuse that can happen, where people use and abuse social media in a way that's derogatory to the very nature of what we stand for, which is having a voice, and having the voice not doctored and shaken about a little bit and put out the other end in something that wasn't actually said. So I'm more than happy to give way as well.
councillor Dale.
Thank you very much. I think one of the things I'd like you to also put in is about monitoring, because I think, as councillor Ledger has said before, there's some really quite nasty stuff out there, and I feel very sorry for officers who've had to bear the brunt. And I think that we need to have a strong monitoring process in place to make sure that everybody's quite accountable for everything they put on their Facebook or use, according to this council, that makes sure it's totally true and honest.
councillor Pittcock.
Can I speak after this motion has been passed?
What about?
It might be a bit subtle that for you. That's quite rhetorical, I can't speak.
Well, you can speak now if you want.
No, thanks.
Right, anybody else on social media and the motion that is in front of us? Say nobody. Grant, do you want to come back?
I just think that the Liberal Democrats, yes, I just think the Liberal Democrats don't try to get involved in who the Labour Group wish to put on this committee, and I'm sure that eventually we'll actually get down to formulating a very good policy that helps us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, sorry. Oh, sorry, our vote, sorry. All those in favour, please show. Abstentions? Well, that's unanimous. Item 10. Report of the Director of Finance, one, revisions to the council's constitution, LGPS. councillor Oliver.
We've already discussed earlier the merger of the council pension, on the local government pension scheme with the Tynan Weir Pension Scheme. So this item is to deal with a, well, two issues. First of all, to remove the requirement to assess and determine applications regarding the disposal of lump-sum death benefits from the Northumberland County Council Staff Appeals Committee and move it to the Tynan Weir Pension Fund Head of Pensions. The second recommendation is to remove clause seven, pensions, which makes reference to the council or access to the local government pension scheme, because that, you know, we no longer have access to that local government pension scheme as of 2014 from part seven of the constitution. So basically, I think in terms of lump-sum death benefits, it's a very rare occurrence, and the current situation would not be feasible moving forward. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be in the best interest of the beneficiaries of the lump-sum death, because it would increase delays. And so what's being proposed here is a more effective, a more timely, and also a system that's been, that's been sort of recommended by the Aon, who administered the pension, who provide advice to pension. So I don't propose to say too much more, you've had the papers, except to say if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? It's seconded. Everybody happy?
Agreed.
Agreed. Item two, Treasury Management Midyear Review Report and Period, oh, one, April to September. Nicola.
Yeah, this will be even briefer, this obviously is a report for information, which is probably six months, and I'm just happy to report that the Treasury Management's of Northumberland County Council continues to be, to be very good. And I just recommend that members approve the report.
Is that seconded? Do you want to speak? Come on.
Thank you for that, councillor Oliver. I note in page 165 on Cabinet Expenditure 7.1, of the £261 million reduction in capital investment in Northumberland, something like £35 million is in relation to schools. Now, we know that educational attainment for our children, that's primarily two things. One is the quality of teaching, but the other one is the quality of the accommodation, the schools themselves. So can you tell me where the £17.35 million and what school that will be invested in?
I'm sorry, I can't actually give you the specifics on that, but the plans have changed, and there will be, as you'll discover when we come to discuss the budget in February, there's a very ambitious investment programme planned for schools, and we have some very, very ambitious plans to improve the education right across the county, because as councillor Daly said at a previous meeting, the standards that we've inherited are very, very poor, and we need to improve that dramatically. So there will be significant investment in schools across the county, and we'll make those plans clear when we come to budget.
Okay. Anybody else? Can we pass this?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Eleven, Report of the Monitoring Officer. Who's doing this? This is councillor Oliver again.
Yeah, so the recommendations of this are to note the position thus far of the appointment process relating to the vacancies for the three parish council representatives on council standards committee, two, to agree to appoint the following parish councillors to the three vacancies on the council standards committee. They are councillor Bryn Owen of Craster Parish Council, councillor Andrew Tebbit of Morpeth Town Council, and councillor Alex Wallace of East Bedlington Parish Council. And in doing so, to agree to amend the council's constitution to remove the requirements for an area-based appointment in respect of these appointments, and to express the council's gratitude to the recently retired former incumbents of these positions for their contributions to the work of the standards committee over the last number of years, and to agree to amend the council's constitution to remove from the council's standards committee the responsibility for granting dispensations to parish and town council members from requirements relating to disposable pecuniary interests.
councillor Davy.
Yes, Chair. If I may second this, although one of the councillors is an active liberal, I agree wholeheartedly with this report, and the three people who have done the work previously have done it absolutely marvelously, and they've put a lot of effort in, I'd like to thank them very, very much indeed.
I think there's one at the back. Councillor, former councillor Rawlings. Councillor Ruffhead.
Thanks, Chair. Fully support this report recommendation.
Wait for the mic. I would hate to miss it.
Thanks, sorry, members. So I fully agree with this report and welcome it, but on number three, to agree to amend the council's constitution to remove the requirement for an area-based appointment in respect of the these appointed, I would propose an amendment, so would read this the following, to agree to amend the council's constitution to change the requirements for an area-based appointment to desirable but not essential in respect, no, to desirable but not essential criteria in respect for these in future appointments.
I'm happy to second that amendment, I think it's quite important to try and have a spread right across the county, and I think that's a sensible amendment.
So that's seconded. Anybody want to speak against that, or is everybody happy with that minor amendment? Okay, are we happy with the body? councillor Reid.
Yeah, Chair. Kind of prompted by one of the previous speakers, Andrew Tebbit is a personal friend of mine, do I need to declare an interest on that, or?
Is he a personal friend of yours? Are you likely to favour or disfavour him because of that friendship in this appointment council?
No.
Nice to know you've got some friends.
Yeah, always rely on them.
Yeah. So are we happy with this report? Yes, thank you. Twelve, Report of the Head of Planning Services, proposed changes to the Strategic Planning Committee Terms of References and Power. councillor Riddle.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, when we formed area planning committees, we obviously changed some of the terms of reference. This was probably one that was admitted at the time, didn't come on my radar at the time, it's in my mind a minor change, but an important change, in particular allows the ability for the proposals of corporate strategic significance to be determined by the county-wide committee rather than by local area committees. So really, it's all in the report there, there's very little more that needs to be said unless you have questions.
councillor Davy.
If you have questions, Chair, I have an objection to this. The planning applications linked to the council's statutory duties mark in bold, or some of those have been coming to the local area planning committees, and they should still remain with the local area planning committees. This, a lot of this is about delegation, and these items should not be delegated. We as a council, whatever we do, is covered by legislation. So it doesn't matter what planning application goes through, the council is covered by legislation on that planning application of some sort or another, and if it's its own planning application, it's covered by planning law and legislation, otherwise it wouldn't be doing it, and it can't do it. So what we've got here today is that if it's a council issue, it can be virtually nodded through by the head of planning unless you know 21 days before, you know, you complain 21 days before the, after the application's been put in. Now, when it comes to the council putting an application in, unless you actually live on the doorstep, and we've had a recent occasion where one councillor lived 100 metres from the site of something that was going on and was not told about it, and had to make several phone calls to find out about this application, and it would have never been even discussed if it hadn't been on a local area committee. Now, the local area councils or committees should still retain items of local need. So items of local need, in this case, the building that no one knew about the planning was a nursery school. It came, it was rejected because it's some of the worst parking arrangements you've ever seen in your life, and the danger that the children coming to this nursery school would have been untold. In councillor Reid's ward, and I'm going to help him here and name him, another nursery school's been about to be built. He'll not even know when the application goes in unless he's actually, unless he's actually told by the people who apply for it on the council. The school that is going to be built in his ward, the traffic is so bad that he gets complaints almost daily, and that is the truth in him, he will admit that whether we're all going to know the matters or not. So these things need to come to the local areas, because the local people need to have the opportunity to discuss them, to debate them, and to either agree or disagree with them. So I wholeheartedly disagree with this item here reversed, and items of local interest need to be retained by the local area planning committees.
councillor Riddle.
Yeah. Councillor Davy is correct in highlighting the point that brought this to committee, brought this, sorry, back to me to be reconsidered. But what I'm going to say is that that application which you referred to, which was refused against officer recommendations, against the advice of the highway officer, if it goes to appeal, it's likely to be lost, but that's, you know, that's whatever happens. But that is not, that particular scheme, I hope, that planning application will be referred, I hope, back to you area committee for reconsideration. But what I will say is that this is about the future, it's not about that particular application. And I think it is important that things of strategic importance are decided, they should go to the strategic planning committee, they can be advertised, anybody can look on the web and see anything that's there. There's nothing being hidden here. We did change the terms of reference when we moved to area planning committees, and I'm pleased that you've acknowledged, you know, they do bring local representation. But one thing that I wanted to put in, which was put in, was that developments involving 100 houses or more, or more than 1,000 square metres of commercial floor space, that was something that we put in that you agreed to change the last time. So, you know, it's not unusual that I'm asking you to change them, but I do believe that they offer sound reasons, not to hide anything, and not to railroad it.
councillor Bourne.
Thank you, Chair. Just a bit of confusion there, because I don't know about other members here, but I get an email about every application that happens in my ward, whether it goes to strategic planning or to local planning. So to say that members aren't being informed about planning applications happening in their area, I'm very concerned if other members aren't getting that email. So I think that's something that needs to be looked at if that's not happening, because certainly as far as I was aware, that all applications in my ward I was being informed about, and if that's not the case, and matters that go strategic aren't being emailed to members, that's something that needs to be looked at. Thank you.
councillor Wilson at the back. Just pass it over.
Thanks, Chair. I'm the councillor that wasn't informed, by the way. I did get emails on my phone about other planning cases, but this one didn't come to me. As I say, I live 100 yards, but I had a planning meeting there, 100 yards from my house, and I was never informed. I was informed a few days later from the member of the public, and I was lost, what the heck are you talking about? There's been nothing at my door, nothing on the paper, nothing anywhere. I phoned a number of people at the county hall, Mark, a few others, even the hair teachers at the schools around, and they had no clue what I was talking about. I went back to the people who sent us an email, and I stood and thought, what happened? The lady that started this planning vacation is gone now, and I thought, that's nice, they've started something and it's gone away. There was this number, local people wants to know what's going on in the area. If we're hiding something, we're kind of behind people, they won't know us. If we're hiding something, we're going to be hiding people, they won't know us. Can't go there and say, we're going to hide this from you, we're going to hide that from you, we can't. The school, the people, it's out, all of the morning the school's coming. But it's the planning of the car park facilities, there's none, none. And if we stop it here now and get it sorted, the next school can move on. We're going to move on like this, mate. I'm going back at night to speak to his people. And I've got, oh God knows I'm going to get beat here, bro. Let's turn the room, what was going on, something like that.
Can people be careful that this is still a planning application? So we're not talking about this planning application. I've got a number of people, I want to go to councillor Towns. Then Dale Dickinson Gallagher.
Thank you Chair, it might be a case of spot lawyer in the house, but I've got a couple of concerns over the wording in the general terms of reference. First off, we've got planning applications involving more than 100 houses and more than 1,000 square feet, sorry, 1,000 square metres of commercial floor space. But then we're talking about planning applications involving less than 100 houses and less than 1,000 square metres. So what if there's an application for 100 houses or an application for 1,000 square metres? So that's a point of clarity on that, also a point of pedantry is we've got involving less than 100 houses. Could we change that to fewer than 100 houses? Thank you Chair.